Welcome to the City of West Miami. We're on the air. So, welcome to the City of West Miami. Welcome to our regular commission meeting of Wednesday, October the 18th, 2017, at 7:30 for the invocation, Chief. I'm sorry, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads this evening and thank our Lord for our daily bread and blessings. And we also pause this evening to recognize the life of service and honor Sergeant LaDavid T. Johnson of Miami Gardens, a soldier and father who was killed in Niger. And they returned his body home on Tuesday afternoon. So, this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission and the community, we ask you to join us in prayer so that his life had a true meaning for his family and the community. We pray for thousands of men and women who are serving our country to make it a better world. We pray so that our leaders can overcome challenge, adversity, and lead in unity for a common goal of making us one nation under God. Again, we pray for all the officers who have since lost their lives while serving and protecting, and for their families as they reconcile those losses. We pray for all of our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, so that they can return home to their families safely. And to, in closing, this evening, please keep Mercedes Leon, our Finance Director, and her family in your prayers, as her brother is undergoing a very serious surgery this evening. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Chief, for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item, item four.
Testing. It's on. Yes, thank you.
New system?
No.
No, I'm fine. As long as we're on. Feels weird. Different correction. Whenever you're ready, presentation of minutes.
Okay. Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 20th, 2017, Charter Review Board Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for September 20th, 2017, regular City Commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for September 15th, 2017, emergency City Commission meeting.
Any comments on the minute?
Motion.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for October 4th, 2017, Charter Review Board Meeting.
Motion.
I need a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for October 4th, 2017, regular City Commission meeting.
Okay.
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I would like to take, Madam Clerk, some items out of order. I would like to first read item A, committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item A, committee reports, report of mayor.
Uh, yes. Tonight, um... We have in the audience somebody that has become very, very dear to us, and that's Armando from Florida Power and Light. As a matter of fact, as a joke tonight, I asked him that he changed his cellphone, because right after Hurricane Irma, I called him, I don't know, 10 times a day, giving addresses to, you know, every time I found a power line down, and, you know, so I called him, I called him to the point that he said, "Mayor, can you start texting me this information?" And, but anyway, I'm so glad that he was so responsive. I think City of West Miami had a record in, you know, turning this around. And although we had a record, and they did an excellent job in restoring our power as quickly as possible, I started, you know, since I went, you know, and I saw a lot of houses, I saw a lot of alleys, and I saw what was going on, I said, "We gotta have a better system. We have a better system for next time." I think we need to educate our residents in terms of vegetation, you know, what those limbs do to the power line, you know, knocking down the transformer, knocking down the lines. So, if we can, you know, cut it down, eliminate, we're never gonna be 100%, but if we can have something like that, so, one of the ideas is to have a town meeting where we, Florida Power and Light comes over here with their tree crew, and they educate the public. And to, in the future, actually, we have a record time, better than what we had before, and I hope it's in the distant future, not too long. So, that's what I got for my report. I was gonna meet with him, actually, I don't, we don't have a date yet, but sometime next week, we're gonna meet, and we're gonna discuss this and see how we can go about it, and have a town meeting, and then we'll let you know, so. So, that's all I have for my committee report. And with that, I would like to take item D, 10D, out of order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 10D, presentation of certificate of recognition to Armando Fernandez at Florida Power and Light Company in reference to post-storm communications and restoration efforts by Mayor Mujina.
Thank you. Can I ask my colleagues to come forward, and Armando, if you can come forward, please?
Armando, I think I said a little bit, but we are actually grateful that there was a voice on the other side. Instead of just a computer, you know, you log in, and you type in your address, and then you get a response. And sometimes you get a response that, "Oh, by the way, you have power." And then you order a house, and you have power. So, I'm glad that you were to face the voice, let the analogy, you serve the community, so we can work on restoring power. And with that, we want to present to you the certificate of recognition presented to Armando Fernandez at Florida Power and Light, the Mayor and the City Commission of City of West Miami, honored the commitment to civic responsibility on this occasion. We express our most heartfelt thank you for your commitment, support, and communication towards the mayor of the City Commission, and City administration by ensuring power restoration through City of West Miami, the best of its means, made of this agreement date of 2017. Bye, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Armando.
Thank you, Armando.
You know, it's a great honor to receive this, really, to receive this on behalf of countless key members that we had working tirelessly hours to restore the City of West Miami a record time.
Thank you. He can change his number between now and next hurricane season. He can change his number between now and next hurricane season.
And I can assure you that my number will stay the same.
I promise.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. If you could, Mr. Mayor, consider, Mr. Mayor, we have some other certificates for you to issue for volunteers, and we can read the list. I think the first one will be Manny Orbis, representing District 6 Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, Miami-Dade County. Manny? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. I appear before you on behalf of Commissioner Rebecca Sosa and the members of the District 6 staff to thank you for the kind invitation to attend tonight's meeting. Your initiative to issue certificates of recognition to the Commissioner and my colleagues for the District 6 donation of sand and sandbags in anticipation of Hurricane Irma is truly appreciated and indeed humbling. Like all of you, the elected leaders of West Miami and your dedicated team of professional public servants, Commissioner Sosa and her District 6 staff were simply fulfilling the duty of serving the community. The work performed was a collective effort in helping prepare the community in advance of the storm. But those who truly merit the recognition are the residents who put the needs of their neighbors ahead of their own to volunteer and join us in serving the community. Commissioner Sosa is honored to work along your side for the community that placed their trust in her. She always embeds in us her priority of residents first, and we proudly follow her leadership in serving the public. While Commissioner Sosa, my colleagues and I are immensely thankful for the recognition you offer us today, we were simply doing our job. Those certificates are deserved by the volunteers, and to them, I extend Commissioner Sosa's deepest appreciation. As always, Commissioner Sosa is ready to work with you for this great city, and I thank you.
Thank you. I'm on my head. Well, we understand that, and that is why this certificate is not for your name, but actually, this certificate is recognition to Miami-Dade County District 6 Office. We want to thank you anyway.
Okay.
I know it's your duty, and I understand that you work for the county, and your responsibility is for the residents of West Miami, and we really understand that. But regardless of who wants to recognize you, because we are lucky that we have, you know, a Commissioner like Rebecca Sosa and people like me that come and help. I believe the lower counties don't have that, as we do. So, again, this is a certificate of recognition to Miami-Dade County District 6 Office. The Mayor and the City Commission of City of West Miami honor the commitment to civic responsibility on this occasion, and we express our most heartfelt thank you for the time devoted to Hurricane Irma, this storm, and for the community involved, dated this 18th of October, 2017. With the help of the Mayor.
Thank you, and again, I'd just like to reiterate the spirit of the Commissioner's statement, which is that we were simply doing our jobs. We're very thankful for your graciousness. We certainly appreciate it, and Commissioner Sosa is always here to serve the residents of the city and work with you guys. Thank you.
You know, I know how hard you worked, and others from the office, like Natasha and, Madam Manager, can you refresh my memory?
It was Natasha, it was Lily, it was Manny, it was Jose Daniel, Alex, and Betty Aguirre, and the Commissioner herself.
Well, I was there, and I witnessed how hard they worked, and how much they...
And Gloriaima.
Gloriaima, I'm sorry.
Gloriaima.
Gloriaima Richardson, yes.
I always, I forgot her name, but I was there, and I know how hard they worked. And you know what? In the spirit of being recognized for that hard work, you know, the blood, sweat, and tears, you know, I hope that you can, you know, accept this certificate. It's coming from, it's coming from me and the group, you know, so.
Sure.
But instead of giving the name of the Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, at least, if all the chairs are not there, we're accepted in the evening? Well, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to mention the names, but the figure, yeah. You want to come on here? And you know, it doesn't seem like it, it doesn't seem like it, that a bag of sand at, during that time, would help someone so much. But I tell you, I never saw somebody so thankful for being able to get, you know, five, six, seven, eight bags of sand, being able to go back home and secure their home, their doors, their windows, as much as possible. At least, it gave them a sense of relief, that they were actually doing something to prevent, you know, destruction to their home. So, you know, and it was because of your help, and Commissioner Sosa's formation of sand, and Commissioner Rodriguez, she was out there also, blood, sweat, and tears. She was.
And me.
And we'll be the greatest footballers, but, you know, it was a team effort, and, you know, that's the, that's the kind of thing that makes it, we needed to come together, you know, and put all differences aside.
Yep, thank you, Manny. The next gentleman, the next certificate, Mr. Ralph Oreje Junior.
He always...
He's here, present.
Sandman.
The sandman.
Mr. Ralph, if, 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 we want to first, that overall, we didn't get a written statement. He's been hiding, he's been hiding, because we've been chasing him to give him this certificate of recognition. So, I'm not gonna, you know, do all too much on it. Basically, Ralph, I'm gonna call you Ralph, because you're Ralph, too. We just want to say thank you. I know you were the first out there, jumped on it right away. I would really, really, really appreciate that. Okay? So, with that, we want to present this certificate of recognition for your effort in helping your community. Be happy, be happy.
Mayor, if I may, Ralph called me right when that declaration was signed by the Governor, and immediately put his personal and business resources together and offered to bring a truck full of sand and a thousand sandbags at their company's expense. So, he worked really, really hard. Thank you, Ralph.
I have a good friend named Ralph, that Ralph's giving attitude goes also with his children and his family. I just learned, I missed it, but his daughters, this past weekend, did a little aid sale, and they made them, and they did a little aid sale proceeds of that sale, which is different than for people. So, he's giving, it sends to his, to his children, which is, is like, you know, like...
They donated like 30 bucks.
I commend you and your girl and your family for, you know, to give them the big buck.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm...
That is correct. Bryce will not be able to make it. We have confirmed Mr. Justin Aguirre, and Kevin Loriae, also confirmed. Who do you have there? Kevin? Loriae family? Kevin Loriae, please?
Let me tell you, the, and as I was saying, as I was saying earlier, you know, it seems that, at the worst time, you know, that, that it brings out the best of humanity in all of this. And unfortunately, we got this hurricane, and we had, you know, some, some disruption. And right after the hurricane passed, Kevin took it upon himself, hard on his ATV and hard with his chainsaw, and he single-handed cleared streets that were impassable. I was riding around, doing my rounds, busting my head into it, doing my little scooter, and I gave him a call to a young couple that lived on 14th Street. And I was talking to them, and they immediately started alluding to what Kevin had done. And they were so impressed, they were so touched by what he did, that they asked him for his name, his last name, for his number, and then they gave it to me. And that's what Kevin is here. But these are the little things that amount to greatness in our community, you know, having people such as Kevin, that took the time, uh, right immediately after the hurricane, and he started clearing the streets, single-handedly, because, you know, with the chainsaw, he started clearing the streets, I don't know how many streets he cleared. And he helped other, other residents clean out, you know, their yards. And, you know, they, this couple asked him, "Well, what are you in charge?" And he said, "Nothing, I'm here to help." And I tell you, they, the way that they conveyed his speech, they were so touched by his, by his help, that, you know, they called him a hero. You know, at that very moment, you know, for them, he was a hero. So, with that said, Kevin, I mean, I mean, the City of West Miami wants to recognize you for this certification. Uh, yeah, I'm trying to, you know, for the certificate of recognition presented to Kevin Loriae, the Mayor and the City Commission of City of West Miami, honored the commitment to civic responsibility on this great occasion. We express our heartfelt thank you for the time devoted to Hurricane Irma's response efforts, and your commitment to walk with data this 18th day of October, November 7th. Mayor Ronald Mena, Vice Mayor Ramon Rodriguez, Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez, Commissioner Rosario, myself, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Smack, Kevin. Smack. And now, hold on, we'll come up, come on, come on. Everybody, everybody. Come on, hand to the... Thank you. You deserve it.
Thank you very much, Kevin. And the next one is Justin Aguirre, he's here. Justin, welcome. Please come up to receive your certificate.
Justin, it is, in times of hurricane, and we all come together, and also, of course, the church spirit started to question me, and I was just thinking, you know, the church spirit, the show, and we're talking, you know, the finger, and of course, there have been, you know, many persons who give their recognition to Justin Aguirre, there, to the church spirit, to the husband. And in this space, we express our heartfelt thank you, for the time of hurricane, and our first one, and also, the mayor, who, 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 As you know, the City of West Miami had to refund in one of the storms. And I want to say, it was Katrina, uh, back in two thousand and five. FEMA de-obligated a total amount of fifty-four thousand dollars. You know that that's a large sum of money for our city. We want to make sure that we don't have to pay a dime back to FEMA, and that we do things right from the get-go. So, it's very important that we follow the, the terms and conditions of the FEMA guidelines, so that we can be on our way to our financial recovery. The report is separate under the agenda item. And I felt this was important for us to bring up to you, so that you could understand the, um, the, the sensitivity of the issue. So, um, that being said, also, um, be, because there is no other commission meeting prior to Halloween, I wanted to reassure you that the chief's office has committed a large presence of police officers patrolling dur, on Halloween evening. Um, there will be our safe pumpkin patrols, where the officers give candies to the kids, and they're going to be riding in our neighborhood with their side lights on to ensure a safe Halloween. And by the same token, John Michael Lopez has reported that on October thirty-first, they will have their regular costume, um, judging contest. And I know that Commissioner Blanis, being the chairman of the parks, and Commissioner Rodriguez of the education committee always come together and participate in the, uh, actual judge, judging of the, of the costumes out and, and the event that they have, uh, for the kids. We'll be ordering some cupcakes and some juice, so that they can have a, a good time.
Thank you.
Do, do we have prices, uh, that we have stored?
We will, we will.
I know that sometimes we have gifts.
We will, we have, uh, we'll probably go out and get a few gift cards for the different categories, for the different age groups. That makes it nice, you know, the kids have something to look forward to.
They love that, they, they love, they love winning.
Yeah, the AMC movie ticket, um, raffles that we give out, and we usually make popcorn and have music for them. And, um, it's the after-school, because the schools have events. So, the after-school program, we'll have something, and then we'll order the cupcakes from either Publix or the bakery, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep, so, um.
Do we have a time on that, Madam Manager?
We don't yet, um, John is, I talked to John today about it, and he said he will have a, a time for the, for the ju, for the costumes, um, probably by the end of this week.
Well, we do have a good time doing that.
So that we can notify you with at least a few days, uh, uh, at least a week's notice.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any question for the manager, additional question? Okay, next item.
Commissioner Blanis, I think we should go in costume this time, what do you think?
Uh, okay.
We'll get to that.
We'll figure that one out.
The highlight of the, of the party.
Next item?
Next item, item six, report of the city attorney.
I don't have a report of the city attorney, uh, although I do have an item in the agenda, which is ordered since, uh, two thousand seventeen. And I have a number, it's usually, I don't know, one, I think.
Okay, you want to report at this time, or do you want to wait till the item comes?
It's a public hearing, I think.
This is a first reading, so I don't have to report any more.
Okay, all right, so let's wait till it gets right into the record. Anything else, uh, Mrs. Attorney?
No.
Okay, next item?
Yes, Mr. Attorney, we assign the number as once the ordinance is adopted. Uh, item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee report, we've covered, uh, the committee reports. Any other committee, Mr. Mayor, that would like to report?
Any other committee wants to report? Okay, next item?
Item nine, citizen presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next item?
Item ten, under unfinished business. Item ten-eight, nomination of alternate members to the charter review board by mayor and city commission, and also mayor and members of the city commission. We would like to inform you that one, one of our members has resigned. Uh, this member was nominated by Vice Mayor Blanca, so I'm just updating you on that matter. And if at any time Commissioner Blanca would like to nominate another member, we can bring, uh, the item to the agenda for her nomination.
Okay, does anybody have, uh, anybody that needs to be nominated? Okay, I guess, uh, nobody at this time, so if you can keep it for the next, uh,
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
From the next meeting, this item. Next item?
Item, item ten-B, follow-up report by city manager in reference to estimated cost of street signs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission, and especially Commissioner Blanis, as, as this is an item that, um, you have expressed a, a desire to accomplish. Um, as you know, we, um, went from embracing a, a street sign, uh, change, actually to update our street signs initially. We thought about doing some intersections, like the gateways to the city. Then after Commissioner Blanis presented it, it was approved that the city pursue a citywide project on updating the signs, giving us a sense of identity by inserting a logo and re-changing all the screens in our street signs, and, and basically updating, um, and, and so with a reflector, so that it could be seen in the evening. Um, after the storm, uh, I asked Mr. Penna to go back and give us an assessment, a realistic projection, an estimate of the cost involved with escalating the project and fast-tracking it into what we consider will be a fifteen-week timeframe for completion, and what it would cost in materials and labor to deliver this project, and, you know, meet the expectations as approved by the commission. I am presented with an estimate that was sent to you via email yesterday for the signs, it's, uh, estimated costs. If the city were to pursue all of its street signs and upgrade them and update them, the cost involved would be close to thirty-eight thousand dollars. The, the most expensive item here are the molds. And we didn't know this at the beginning, but we know now that the molds that we need to deliver this project using three employees of the public works department that would have to be deployed from other services and, um, and, and tasks to complete this project in, in labor and material costs, you're looking at thirty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. We bring this to your attention this evening, because our office needs a direction on how you wished for us to proceed.
So, that's roughly about a hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty dollars per, per, per sign, right, Mr. Penna? That's not that bad, uh, it's the total amount that's kind of shocking for us, you know, considering our budget. Um, you know, as I've stated, uh, before, I think this is something that's going to give our city, you know, a lot more intangibly than, than tangibly. I think that it's, you know, it's gonna give us a sense of identity, a, a sense of pride. Um, it's gonna make residents, you know, feel more, uh, that they belong to a certain area, because, you know, right now, no one really knows where the City of West Miami begins and where it ends. I mean, a lot of people just don't, and, you know, except for, for, for the residents that live here. And, and even some of them are not so sure. But with these signs, we're going to be able to accomplish that. And, you know, the signs that we have are just so old and just so frayed and, and damaged.
Worn out.
Worn out. So, you know, as, as we begin to, to build our city, you know, rebuilding our, our commercial corridors, which we're having great success, um, as we had the grand opening of, of, of the third building on Sixty-seventh Avenue, you know, uh, what a wonderful project. Um, I think that, um, we need to, to charge head-on, you know, with this project, uh, as much as possible. May, maybe it will take a little longer, you know, than, than, than fifteen weeks, maybe, you know, maybe thirty weeks. But at least, you know, we can, we can work, I mean, slowly but surely, but we just cannot give up. Um, I don't know if we can use, um, surtax, uh, money?
No, we cannot.
How about, uh, capital, uh?
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
I don't believe so, because this is a maintenance issue.
Isn't this the transportation?
This is not, uh, part of transit or transportation.
Because we can do lighting, we can do the, the, the circles, so how come it won't apply to, to the signs?
It just will not meet the criteria of the Office of, uh, CITT that governs the PTT.
Did you already look into this and determine this?
We have, we have, we have.
Mr. Penna?
Good evening, Commissioner Mayor. The problem with, uh, surtax funding is that surtax funding is only used for enhancements to transportation. We already, we're not replacing the signs with something different, we are just modifying ours. So that's why it's, it's a repair more than.
It's a maintenance issue more so.
Wait, 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 you said something really interesting. Um, it's a repair, it's not a replacement. Okay, so, if it is a replacement?
If we were to go to something like what the county uses, or Doral is using now, Pinecrest or South Miami, a pole with two, uh, of the, uh, flags on top, then that would be a, a complete replacement. So then you could use surtax funding for that.
Or impact fees for that matter. Because it is a capital improvement project, at that point.
Well, this is something to consider, then. Um, I mean, you know, those kind of signs, you know, are, are endemic of, of, of West Miami. You know, I mean, everybody associates West Miami with having, you know, the signs on the ground. I mean, I, I, I don't know, um, I know that it will definitely change the whole outlook of the city.
May I, may I?
Please.
Yes. City of South Miami, they did that, they put a new, um, same thing, they put a new round. See, see the beautiful, and see the West, South Miami, go to City of South Miami.
Oh, I've seen them, I know what they look like.
Ask, ask, go there, see their mayor or vice mayor or commissioners and ask.
Well, we're just, we're, we're being, we're being told, it, it will qualify. The, the, the question is.
Do we want to abandon our, our?
Something that, you know?
Our nineteen-fifties logo.
Exactly.
I don't think, I don't think we should.
I, I don't think so either, I, I.
I mean, look at the gables, they actually have our street signs still in many of their, in many of their streets.
Oh.
And most of them.
No, all, the only places that they have county signs is on county roadways.
So they are unique to our city, to, to the roots of our city and its founding fathers, and we're very traditional in a sense, so, I mean, unless you replace them and go with what, Mr. Penna?
The, the, the other thing is, you know, the, these signs, I mean, they're very nice. The ones in Pinecrest, the ones in Palmetto Bay, the ones in, uh, the ones in South Miami, Doral. But just think, if we have another storm, you know, they could get damaged.
They did receive a lot of damage, I saw those.
So, so that is mo, more of an expense, more, more of a maintenance. These signs that we're, that we have, they don't, unless somebody runs into them, as they have sometimes.
They're unbreakable.
Yeah, they're unbreakable, so, uh, we, we need to consider that. Because if we do have another storm, we could have, you know, fifty percent of them down, man, that's, that's a lot more work on a very, you know?
And a lot more money.
Small workforce that we have here in West Miami, so.
If I, if, okay, let me, let me, let me ask a question. Uh, by the way, let me start by saying that I'm on board with you, with the, the whole, the whole thing in, in terms of, uh, s, the symbolism, the, uh, you know, to enhance the city. And, and I think everybody in this board is, is, is on board. What happened is the following, um, when this was presented, was pre-hurricane, pre-budget. Uh, and I think the issue the Madam Manager, because the Madam Manager is all about numbers. And, um, the issue that we're having at hand is the following, that this amount of money, it was not contemplated in the budget. Uh, furthermore, uh, we taking people that actually, actually sometimes were short, or, according to Mr. Penna, we're short.
We're always short.
Always short on, 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 on the city, uh, uh, so, so, I mean, we, we started with this contemplating, you know, making it as economical as possible and saving money. The only thing is, uh, we have to follow certain protocols, and that is that this amount of money is not contemplated in the budget. And, and I remember very clear, as we were approving the budget, and I remember, I asked a question, when we put in, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve, and the, the conversation was that because of the storm, uh, that we probably will have to get that money and put it back to pay, because we were looking at at least twelve percent, now we might be looking at ten percent.
No, not, not necessarily, because we, uh, the ninety percent is for the debris category, but we have other expenses that don't fall, we have other expenses like, uh, labor accounts, we have, uh, um, protective measures, we have meals that, you know, that, that the city provided for police department and other city employees. So we had ten thousand dollars in the budget from general fund money to allocate towards the hurricane, because we always put a place marker of ten thousand dollars. However, those ten thousand dollars, we already know that those are, they're gone. Those ten dollars do not, ten thousand dollars do not, there's no fund balance on that ten thousand dollars. We probably exceeded the ten thousand dollars. So you have to find, if you want to fund the project, if you want to pursue the project, you have to, you have to find the dollars, we have to find the dollars, and tell you where we can conceivably budget, or do a portion, or do half, this fiscal year. And then review as of March thirtieth of next year, review the budget again, and see where we can find savings and reallocate. And maybe as soon as we're done with the FEMA, uh, reporting, and we know what we're going to be reimbursed, because we are going to be on the hook for twelve and a half percent for some of the costs, because the federal government pays seventy-five percent, the state kicks in twelve and a half, and the city is responsible for twelve and a half percent. Under the debris category, if we are, uh, one hundred percent on target with the paperwork, we may be considered for ninety percent. I just don't want a repeat of what occurred here in two thousand and five, where we had to give FEMA the money back. Um, and so, we're being extra cautious. I mean, I could sit here today and say, well, we can, we can charge it to reserves, but I would be a little bit more comfortable if we can wait until we're done with the FEMA process, so that we know exactly where we're at money-wise, which we don't know. So, I offer, uh, maybe, uh, something that would start addressing the revitalization of our street signs, and because it is a, a tw, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollar project, if we can maybe allocate from contingency, ten thousand dollars. And start and see how far that takes us, and we may want to do the gateways, like Silvania Boulevard, which is a, a very important thoroughfare, and maybe the, the most, um, important entrances and exits to and from the city, as, as a beginning. And we could see how far ten thousand dollars from contingency will take us. Unless you want a concentration in your residential area, then we can start, um, using the, the busiest avenues or streets within the city, so that there is a noticeable improvement, and people will start to catch on.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, you know, as much as I want to see this done, as I'm, uh, as I'm sure that others here in the commission also want it, uh, we can't put, uh, the cart in front of the bull. I think that we need to be very prudent. We don't know exactly, you know, how much we're going to be on the hook for. And we have a very small budget, uh, we only have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves. So, if you feel that we can use ten thousand dollars, and that is a prudent thing to do, then, then I'm in agreement, but if not, then I would rather wait. But, uh, it's, it's, it's up to you and to your professional.
I think we can devote ten thousand dollars, and I think it's a guarded recommendation, and I think it's for the greater good of the city. We don't know the impact of the twenty-eight, eight, twenty-eighteen election either, next November. And we said initially that we were looking to reserve a quarter of a million dollars. next November. And we said initially that we were looking to reserve a quarter of a million dollars for the property homestead exemption question that is going to appear on the ballot. And then that quickly switched over to a storm because obviously, uh, we were impacted um, by Hurricane Irma. So, you know, things change, um, quickly. And as we went into the final phase of the, of the budget, it was being proactive about putting money in reserves, planning for the ballot question, and all of a sudden it became an emergency issue because of a storm. So I think that the recommendation is guarded. I think it shows good faith on, on our part to try to put, you know, some effort into revitalizing the signs, but taking it a little bit slower rather than have a more aggressive plan in place.
Absolutely.
Can I?
Absolutely.
Commissioner, can I make another suggestion?
Please.
Before, we didn't know how much this was going to cost. Now we have sort of a budget. Uh, what about if this item goes out to bid? And instead of, uh, uh, I see Mr. Penna going, you know, uh. Well, what about, okay, how much it will be to put this project out to bid? So that way we have that information.
We have to prepare some specs.
The reason, the reason I, I say this, and I know there's suspense, but the reason I say this is, is, is a twofold. That will free up the people that we have from the city that are shorthanded to work on this project. And, and, you know, and we have an outside company that will do it. Uh, again, we don't know what that price is going to be till. I know Mr. Penna has a lot of experience and, uh, I know sometimes he can foresee the future. But, uh, I mean, wh- what will be round numbers? What will be the cost of, of putting out this project to bid?
If, if we're going to put it out to bid, um, you know, with legal advertisement costs and the bid opening and everything, I, you know, I see the price escalating more so than us saving money. I don't think you're going to find a contractor in town right now to take on a ten thousand dollar job if that is the recommendation that you will accept.
No, no, no. I'm not talking about the ten thousand dollars. I'm talking about the full amount.
The full amount.
I, I, I tell you, I don't know much about construction.
That's why I'm asking.
But I can tell you one thing, that there's nobody that's going to touch this for under a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe even more.
And I will tell you, this is Mr. Penna's estimate and as much as I respect and love him dearly, I believe that this money, that this estimate will probably incur more money than the thirty-seven thousand dollars. Because you always have delays. You have molds that could go bad and you would have to work on another one. There's always things that can go wrong.
Well, let's just do this. If, if you, if you think that we can take ten thousand dollars and start, let's do that and we'll start real slow. I think probably in the beginning, we're going to make some mistakes. Right? You know, we're going to, till we get it right.
Growing pains.
Actually, there's no, no, there's a mistake. There's a mold.
Well, you know.
No, we're not going to have a mistake.
Make sure the humidity.
We already made one. It's right across the street.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, let's, let's just start very, very slow. Let's just do that.
Let's see how far, let, let us select some intersections for you, if it's okay. We'll give you a list. Um, if you like the intersections, if you agree with the plan, let's see how far or how many signs we can do with ten thousand dollars.
Great. That way we'll know, we'll know more.
And if you would accept this recommendation this evening, at least we have, we know that it's coming from contingency, that we have ten thousand dollars in there that we cannot spend on anything else so that we can start to make a dent in the, and, and, and make progress with, with the job.
Okay, uh, I know this came as a, as a report, but I, I think we need, uh, somebody to make a motion. We need to second and vote on it. So, so we can give marching orders to the manager if, unless anybody else wants to have any other questions or clarification.
I, I'd just like to commend Commissioner Blanas. I know he came, he first presented this. He was very passionate about getting it done right away. And now that he's seen the black and white, he's, uh, being a team player and realizing.
Irma came along and danced, you know.
I just commend Commissioner Blanas on, on being a team player and, and realizing the best way to do this. So thank you, sir.
Well, you know, it's, it, when you sit here, you know, it's, it's different. You know, you sit here, you, you, you have to.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
Uh, is your, um, proposition, ten thousand dollars to start this?
To start this and that it be funded out of your new budget contingency fund, which has twenty-five thousand dollars in it.
We don't have any grants. We don't have any money.
We do not, sir. Not right now.
We have to pay for ourselves.
May I suggest?
But we'll be, we'll be for ourselves. We'll be for the city. We'll be for our streets. So we'll be for our, I mean, we, it's going, it's going to be a good investment.
I believe so.
Growing, the city is getting beautiful. So we are not spending something for the moon. We are not spending something from out of the city. We're spending something for our own, our interest, the residents' interest. And I'm pretty sure residents are going to be very happy, especially the, the young residents, the new residents here. They are seeing something blossoming in the city. I make a motion for that.
Can I say something?
Yes.
We recently had a donation of ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Can we allocate those ten thousand dollars for this?
Okay, the ten thousand dollar comes in as miscellaneous income. We can charge against it if that is your wish. We were holding it.
Was a suggestion.
Whatever your, whatever your preference is.
That's money that we didn't have.
That's money that's coming in as a deferred revenue that we were not anticipating at all.
Right.
So that money comes in as a, as a deferred revenue and it comes in as miscellaneous income. You can designate whatever you want to use or to be used, how we should spend those dollars.
Well, we, we can leave the ten thousand dollars in contingency and take that, you know, that revenue and apply.
You're going to have, you're going to have ten thousand dollars more in revenue as a result of that donation that came in from the corporate citizen than what you anticipated. How you spend it, we still have to, we have to charge an operating account. That's why my recommendation was to charge the non-account, the contingency fund. You can't charge against that revenue.
I never understood accounting.
Okay.
So.
You got to charge against.
If you're going to take it from here or take it from Paul, just take it.
We have an excess ten, ten thousand dollars, but we have to charge an expense account.
Mr. May I?
Yes.
Clarify this. According to what I heard, you recommended ten thousand dollars. If you get donations, that would be on top of that. Simple. It's not, you don't have to go to university for that.
Not, not according to, no, not according to the manager. Why do we leave the math to the manager? And, uh, let's, let's move with the motion. You have a motion on the table? I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time with more time, I will ask that question to you and to the manager about donations. What happens to me here a couple of years ago.
Bye, thank you, night.
Good night.
And even, even Mr. Santorino clarified to me that if a resident wants to make a donation for something spent in the city, it's legal and there's nothing wrong with that. But this is not for today. I don't want to keep talking the same thing.
Thank you.
We're talking another meeting.
Okay, uh, next item.
Item eleven, eleven A, under new business agenda items. This is a fair, first reading, a public hearing in ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida relating to medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities. Prohibiting banning such facilities as a lawful use within the boundaries of the city as authorized by section three, one, uh, three eight one, nine eight six of the Florida statutes. Amending the municipal code of ordinances to prohibit, ban all, uh, such uses in all zoning districts of the city, providing for implementing provisions and a definition, providing for a moratorium contingency, providing for enforcement, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for a savings provision, providing for codification, providing for conflict, conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And this first reading and public hearing was advertised on a newspaper of January circulation on October sixth.
Motion.
Mayor, you have a public hearing.
We had to, well, but I, before I open the public hearing, I, I need to ask you a question, Mr. Attorney, because typically on first reading, there's no discussion. So if there's no discussion, I'm a little confused. We have to open the public hearing?
Uh, usually, the, uh, the reason that I suggested to the clerk to have two readings is that this is such a touchy item that can affect the city in such a bad way that I thought that it was prudent to have it advertised so nobody could say that they were not in knowledge of this issue. So I would respectfully suggest that you open up for a hearing. If there is a, any person in the audience who wants to address it, he might. Uh, I'm erring in the, uh, side of caution. And I think that it would be prudent for you to do that.
Okay.
It's not usually done, but this is, this is what I suggest.
Okay, no, I understand. But I'm going to ask you another question. Since it's a, uh, first reading, no discussion. So if we open the public hearing and somebody decides to talk on the subject, we listen to it, but we, as a body here, as a commission, we can't make any decision, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, all right. Except for motion, second and approval, this is approval.
And as I say, I know that this is not usual.
Mm-hmm.
But this, uh, to me is very critical. And, uh, we have had already several inquiries about opening marijuana, uh, medical marijuana within the city. And, uh, you know, I don't think that, uh, as I suggested, uh, that would be good for our community.
No problem. I just want to understand the rules of the game. Okay, thank you. We open the public hearing. Anybody wants to speak on the subject? Okay, we close the public hearing, back to the table.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, well, I'm sorry, call the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero and the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance would be advertised, Mr. Mayor, not on November first due to the circumstances of the city attorney, but for November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. They now have like to make a report. Even though we have had a, an ordinance prohibiting the sale of marijuana, we're still under the ordinance that, uh, we have ninety, a hundred and eighty days since the first, uh, time that we had a, um.
Moratorium.
A moratorium approved by your council. So we're totally safe at this point. So what I have done is go over, beyond and above, uh, any prudent issue uh, for the good and welfare of the city.
And we do appreciate that, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. Uh, can you read item B and C into the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item eleven B, request for authorization to enter into an agreement for software support cloud-based program for the city's accounting backup and storage system with conduit by city manager. Item eleven C, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with conduit cloud-based program for the city's general accounting system to be funded from the city's budgeted two thousand and seventeen eighteen computer account in the non-department five twenty-nine three eight eight account titled Computer Services, providing for a three-year service agreement, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is an item that we, uh, had knowledge that was gonna, um, basically of impact our, our, our budget. And so the finance director and I made a provision to, um, set some money in the budget aside so that we would be able to cover the expenses of a, um, of an agreement that, um, would service the software needs for our PACE budget and accounting system, our PACE accounts receivables and the utilities. This is a cloud-based, um, software that, um, will, um, take care of or replace the tape backup systems that are usually done by hand now. All of our accounting programs have to require for us to have a backup tape so that we, in the case of a power outage, a hurricane, uh, a crashing of the system, we have all of the accounting records of the city on file. Well, they will no longer support that tape system. They are now going on a cloud-based program. So the city went ahead and budgeted additional dollars in its computer account to take care of the funds necessary to cover this proposal from conduit. Mrs. Leon has reviewed the terms and conditions of the agreement and she is recommending that we bring this item to you and, um, that the city, um, enter into an agreement with conduit so, uh, we can, uh, pay for the services for seventy-two months commencing February first, twenty eighteen through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Meaning this agreement is, if approved, will have to be entertained on a yearly basis as part of your budget. Um, but again, our system, the, the way we back up our information is obsolete and they're no longer servicing that. So there are no guarantees that if we continue on the tape system, that we will be protected from, in, in preserving our records.
May, may I?
Yes.
Mrs. Aguirre, madam manager, it was about time that we have this. Because we are in the last century in our systems downstairs. So I agree with this a hundred percent. This is, we have to do it as soon as possible. I am making motion for this.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, can you call? Can, uh, it was right already into the record, both, both items. Uh, but thank you for the clarification. Um, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Blanas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item.
Yes, item eleven D, request for follow-up and clarification on use of training and conference budgeted dollars. This is by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall back, um, during our final budget submittal, there was a line item that we added, um, to our section for four thousand dollars for conference and training. We left it rather open-ended. I feel that we set no parameters. We gave the city manager no guidance as to how this money should be spent. Um, what qual, you know, what would qualify conference and training and/or how much would each of us be allotted for this money? So I'd like to just get some clarification from all of us and see how this money will be spent. That way we set expectations and we give them, city managers, some marching orders as to how this money can and will be spent.
Okay.
So I'd like, you know, I'd like to hear from everyone to see, um, your thoughts, suggestions.
May I clarify something?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner, uh, Rodriguez.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this, this, uh, money was, is in the budget for the so, uh, significant training and conferences. This money is to be spent in the well-being of the city for the common good of our residents. This is not like a how much each commissioner or the mayor or the manager. This is not that. This is the money that is in the budget in case that we have to do some things for the well-being, I repeat, of the city and the residents. And we have to get extra expenses and travel to the Tallahassee or West Palm Beach or some other places where there is some events interesting for our residents. This is not that each commissioner have an amount. From that money, the expenses, that's what we have been doing here in the past. If you need for that meeting fifteen hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars, they bring to the table. They explain what is for, where the, the representation of the city goes, how much it's going to cost. Bring to the table, forfeit approved. the city goes, how much it's going to cost, bring to the table, forfeit approved, and we spend that money in that particular case. If at the end of the year, from the $4,000 set in the, in the, in the budget, was spent twenty-five hundred, the rest go to the general budget. It was spent the $4,000, zero to the, back to the budget. If it's not spending anything, the $4,000 go to the budget. But the point is that this money is for the necessities of the city, work out of Miami. It's not that it's going to be an amount for each commissioner. That has been for years. I remember you was for years in the position, and you didn't know, you didn't ask questions in that, in that particular. But that is the way.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What did you just say? Could you repeat that? I didn't ask questions. Could you, I didn't quite understand your last comment.
When you was not member of this table, this, this money was also in the budget. And sometimes would never spend, so was back to the general fund. But according with the experience, the money from this is expended according with the necessity of representation from the interest of the residents and the interest of the city. It's very simple. This is nothing for parties. This is nothing for personal things, Commissioner Rodriguez. This is the money is there for, if it's needed, for necessities of the city interest. That's very simple. It's been for years.
Well, Commissioner, thank you for your clarification, but I don't believe you clarified very much in all that you just said. You left it pretty much as open-ended as it was before you, before you clarified.
Maybe I can, can I jump in?
Please.
Well, first of all, does anybody else have any comments or question on this item? Commissioner Blanes, I don't mind to put, I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to know if you have any comments or any?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Blanca?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, I do. I, I think, you know, it's funny that this item came to, but now, after being present at the charter review and hearing, when we were talking about the responsibility of the mayor, the responsibility of the city manager, and when the attorney said something that I've never seen in that context, said that this formal government is a commission along with a manager, it's a strong manager, but it's a commission along with a manager, meaning that this is not a strong management, and it's not a strong mayor. It's a combination. Okay, so I see why you asked your question, because the manager doesn't act alone, and she needs some guidance on how to spend the money. And so that guidance has to come from, from this table. So my understanding is, you don't want to leave it as an open item. You wanted to make sure that we have, and I understand where you're coming from. So here, here's my suggestion, and then we can go, we can take this two different ways. A, we leave it there as Commissioner Suarez mentioned, and if there's a necessity for any of us to, to, to attend, whatever, I, I, I don't even want to use the word seminars because after talking about the charter, you know, I don't know which words to use, you know, seminar, training, lobbying, or whatever it is, but we need to do, like Commissioner Suarez says, representing the city. As long as we bring it to the table and we approve it, then, then we're fine, which we'll, we'll, we'll have that function. So I, I think one suggestion is to have that in place. So that way, any, anytime we, we go beyond our separate accounts, that we have to tap into this account, you know, it should come to the table. So that way, we discuss it. And from what I understand, anytime that we discuss money, oh, there's a transaction about money, we need four-fifth vote. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
I'm not majority.
I'm sorry, did you not understand the question, sir?
Or in this case, we don't need it?
No, only in certain cases do you need, do you require four-fifth vote. This would not be one of them.
Okay, so, so it will be?
Majority.
Majority, okay, all right. I, I just wanted to clarify because I, I believe Commissioner Rodriguez wants to know, as I call it, the rules of the game. So, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think if we divide the pie, that's another way to do it. Again, I want to, I don't want to be the only person having an opinion here. The other way we can look at it is, you know, we divide the pie, the mayor has so much, and the commissioner have so much, and that's one way to do it, too. But, but again, I don't want to be, that's another suggestion, that we could do it, and then we don't have to bring it to the table, or we bring it to the table, no matter what. So again, I need some guidance over here, so, I mean.
May I, may I?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Suarez.
We have a representation money, right?
Yes.
It's, it's an exact amount for each of us. This is regular. This is something extra that is in the budget in case we need. This is no, nothing that each commissioner have to such amount of money to spend. No. This will be a spend if it's necessary. If it's not necessary, do not spend.
I, I understood that.
And we have the necessity, we bring to the table, we say we have to do this, it's going to cost such, and then we approve, and, and that proceed. But this is nothing personal for each one.
Okay, so.
This is an amount of money is there in, let's say.
In the event that it's needed.
In case that we need that. If we don't need it, the $4,000 are there.
But I want to clarify even further. Does that kick in when we deplete our, is, is that the parameters? I mean, what, what are we looking for here?
That's exactly my point of bringing this. We need parameters. We do not have any parameters concerning this money as of this moment in time right now. We should have parameters so that the expectations are set properly, so there's no misunderstanding or misinterpretation of how this money can and will be spent.
Well, the parameters are very simple, may I?
We are setting them tonight.
The money is there. Only will be used when it's necessary, and there is no money in the account of the commissioners. When the account the commissioner have to spend is over, is spent for whatever reason was that we travel with it, if we, we need an extra money for an extra thing, we will use that money. But if not, that money is there, and the, and the end of the year, go back to the general fund.
Okay, understood.
If used only in the case Commissioner Rodriguez, if she have to go to Tallahassee or something, and she use her personal money that she doesn't have, then we go there. And we say Commissioner Rodriguez have to go to Tallahassee for such a matter, and then we have to approve a thousand dollars from the four thousands. And then the table approve, and that's the way that money is used. The parameter is very simple. It's used when it's necessary, and there is no money left in the other personal representation.
So then it's first come, first served? Is that what we're saying?
What about first come, first served?
Exactly. Once you've depleted your representation account, the first one to come, the first one to come to this table and ask for the money can use it all?
If, if, listen, if it's an important thing, and if something.
You're leaving it open-ended, Commissioner. You're leaving it open-ended.
No, wait, 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 Commissioner.
You're leaving it open-ended. You can't just say it's important.
Commissioner.
Hey, I have an emergency call from my house. It's a plumbing problem there, so I'm sorry.
We're discussing this item, Commissioner. Can you, can I say something? Commissioner Suarez, you, you coming back, or?
No, I don't know. I had a plumbing, my wife called, it's a plumbing.
Okay.
Water line there, but.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Suarez just had an emergency and walked out of chambers.
Do you leave noting, Mr. Mayor?
May I, may I pose a question to the attorney?
Uh, be, 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 before, uh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry if you don't mind.
No, because we're in mid, we're in mid discussion. May we continue with this discussion since the commissioner's departed?
That was your, that was your item, Madam Commissioner?
Then I would very much like it to continue on this item.
But I think Commissioner Blanes has a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right.
I, I just want to get this straight. We, we have allotted to us in the budget a certain amount of dollars.
Yes, a representation account.
Right.
Two thousand dollars.
Right. And we use that to, to represent the city and different events, whatever.
Meetings.
Right. So this other money is, is, is a separate account?
It's over and above.
It's a separate account?
Yes, sir.
And it's not under anybody's name?
No, sir.
In, in other words, not the mayor, not any of us other commissioners. So this money is there in contingency in case the representation account expires?
Or if you deplete all the funds within the fiscal year.
If you deplete, if you deplete all the funds in your account?
Right.
And let's say that you want to participate and, and, and go somewhere and represent the city in some, some kind of matter. And if you depleted your account, then you can tap into.
You can, but again.
May I inter?
Of course.
Yes.
I'm, I'm a little confused. May I have a question to the commissioner?
Yes, please.
Okay. What you want is anytime that there is an expenditure on those amounts of money, that you want that item to come to the table, for the table to approve it or disapprove it?
Absolutely. That is one of the parameters I'd like to set.
That, that's the issue.
So it's, it's a simple, putting a motion on the table, and?
But let me ask, you brought another question to my mind. In our representation account, before we spend those monies, should they not come to the table for approval? Isn't that in our charter?
The charter, you want me to go into the charter?
I have $2,000. So before I spend any of that money, am I not supposed to bring that, let's say I want to go to a conference. Am I not supposed to bring that to the table to approve that expenditure before I travel?
There's, there's nothing in the charter.
We never have.
There's nothing in the charter.
No, no, I'm sorry, we, we have, we have. Every time we go to Tallahassee, we bring it to the table, we make a decision, yes.
Tallahassee, but there's been other conferences that have been attended by some, and the, the amount has not been approved prior to attendance.
Okay, you got a good point, all right.
So do we approve it, or don't we approve it beforehand?
Okay, so that's, that's a question to the city attorney.
The $2,000 that you have allocated for yourselves is, does not have to come out to the commission.
Okay.
However, it should go according to the charter, okay? Now, if your motion would be, or your question is that any, any amount that is spending anywhere has to come for approval to the commission, that's another matter. You can bring it out like any other suggestion that any commission may have.
So that's separate from this, you're saying to leave that for a separate agenda item?
This money, or any money, or any amount of money. Because that's not up to the administration, that is up to the commission to determine what is it that you want. If you want accountability for every penny on all issues, you should bring that out to the table.
Well, according to our charter, we should have very, very been doing that, but we have not. Should we just discuss the $4,000 tonight and then leave the $2,000 for a separate discussion? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Attorney?
I, well, I, I'm not an attorney, but the matter at hand right now is the $4,000 because the other one, it's, it's a little more complicated to, to get to. It's going to take some research on the city attorney.
Okay.
If you want to bring that item for the next meeting or so. But I think, I mean, the attorney is not prepared for that. And I think we should discuss the item at hand.
I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it.
And then if you want to bring the other one later on, you know.
My understanding is that the item that you want to bring out is the $4,000.
Yes, we will discuss that.
Expenditures on those $4,000, it is the wish of the commissioner to bring that out, and say, any expenditure of those $4,000 must first come to the approval of the table. Is that your position?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be something to bring out to the table on a motion, on a resolution.
So what are the parameters, then? That?
The parameter would be that it would have to be approved by you.
Prior.
I want to go.
Prior to spending.
But, but how, how do we spend that money? How can it be used? Why would, in other, what would qualify a commissioner, a city commissioner, to tap into that account?
That is labeled conference and training, the way it was requested for us to label that money.
Commissioners?
And that's exactly the way that it is labeled, conference and training.
It's very simple, Commissioner. I, I think, I think we blowing this a little bit out of proportion. I think it's very simple. You, let's say you deplete. Let's use, use, and I know you never deplete yours, but let's use yours. You deplete your account, unless, for the moment, let's say that that account doesn't have to come to the table because of whatever history or whatever. We'll discuss that later on. So you deplete, and now, all of a sudden, there's an event that you think that you should participate, and is for the well-being of the city, okay? And you should be participating in that. Well, you bring it to the table, obviously you have done the research, you know how much it's going to be in anticipation, you bring it to the table, we'll discuss it, we'll either approve it or disapprove it. I mean, how?
But it has, obviously, it would have to be for the good and welfare of the city. It would have to be knowledge that would be gained by a commissioner to bring wisdom to this commission, right?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So, so that, that will establish the checks and balance, and that will establish a parameter for the manager.
It has to come to the table.
It has to come to the table, that, that will establish a parameter to the manager. And, and I know what you're saying, you know, it's first come, first served. Well, yes and no. Yes, because if somebody, for whatever reason, depletes that amount of money, it still has to come to the table. So it's up to us to approve it or disapprove it. But if that is not in place, like it's not right now, then that's a dilemma that the manager will have in her hand. And remember, let's go back to what the attorney said. What kind of formal government is this?
Commission administrative.
Okay, commission administrative.
Commission administrative.
So all we're doing is following the rules of the formal government that we have.
It will have to come to the table.
Yes.
Let me play the devil's advocate here. Okay, I, I'm in agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm in agreement. But this could open up a Pandora's box, okay? Let's just say that Commissioner Blanca has, has an event, and the city of Doral is having some kind of, the embassy of Spain is having some kind of affair at Doral, and is inviting the mayors and the commissioners of other cities to come and to be exposed to, to, to information and how we can maybe possibly partner with.
But this is conference and training. This goes for conference and training.
Well, this is a conference.
Mm-hmm.
This is a conference.
Right.
And you're going to be trained in the possibility of having the knowledge to be able to tap into some kind of business, or some kind of attraction, or something that you can bring to the city, okay? So.
But.
It would have to be up to us to, to, to judge and say, well, okay, Commissioner Blanca, yeah, that is prudent, that, that sounds reasonable. You're going to be going to this conference, and you're going to be meeting with these officials, there's going to be other officials there. Okay, fine, and, and, and we allow it.
You make a motion, wait, wait a minute. You make a motion, somebody seconds, and then it's allowed?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Of course, goes without saying. Now, let's just say the mayor wants to go, the mayor is invited to the city of Key West, okay? They're having some kind of mayor's conference over there. And, you know, they're, the, the mayors are going to talk about their city, okay? So basically, that's a conference, and, you know, each mayor is going to speak, and he, they're going to allow their city. I have this, I have that, and they're going to, you know, switch information and, and, and network, and so on and so forth. Okay? Well, that's a conference, and yeah, you're being educated, and, you know, you're, you're gaining knowledge that can benefit the city. The point that I'm trying to make is that we might not agree on one conference, and then we might agree on another. And we're going to cause a lot of strife and contention here among us, okay? And that, what that's going to cause is, you know, we, we don't agree on everything, you know, and, you know, Commissioner Suarez is contentious at times. He's passionate, he loves the city, and so are you, Commissioner Rodriguez, and so am I, and so is the mayor, and so is Commissioner Blanca. So I'm looking a little bit ahead, and I'm thinking to myself, we need to be tempered here in what we do. So, I'm looking a little bit ahead, and I'm thinking to myself, we need to be tempered here in what we do. Because we can cause a situation for us where we're really gonna drive wedges and divisions that could manifest themselves in making other decisions.
May I?
I don't know, I don't know if I get my point across.
May, may I, uh?
You, you, you can't, I, I'm following, but I, I disagree.
May I have an idea, please?
Yes, yes.
You're totally right, Commissioner. But the problem is that if you do not have something in place, then the, the problem would fall on the manager.
I, I'm not saying that we don't have, uh, I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm, what I'm a- alluding to is that we need to be really tempered and prudent and, and, and wise in the decisions that we make. If, if a commissioner asks, you know, for, for, for something, let's just say one commissioner, let's just say that he, uh, or she, uh, wants to go to a conference, and it's a just cause, okay? And we agree. And then, uh, a month later, the same commissioner comes and asks again, you know, to go to another conference. Well, you know, maybe someone at this table says, well, you already went once, why are you gonna go twice? And then they're gonna vote no. And, and then that's gonna cause issues, that's gonna cause problems, that's gonna cause strife. So, we need to agree to this, okay? With the con, with, with, with the knowledge going forward that we are not going to, um, that we're not going to, um, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? In other words, we're not gonna, uh, hang around a commissioner's neck the fact that he already went once, and now he wants to go again, and now he wants to go a third time. You know, we, we, you know, i- in other words, if, if none of us, if none of us goes to a conference, the money's not used. But if there's one commissioner that wants to go, are we gonna keep him or her from not going? Because he already went to one or two? And that's my point.
And, and I got.
And that's my point, because, you know, the money is there to be spent on, on, on conferences and, and what?
Training.
And training.
It's very broad.
Okay, conferences and training, okay? Gaining knowledge that somehow can benefit the city. If, if there's knowledge and, and wisdom that, 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 that the commissioner can gain, you know, by looking, uh, uh, to see what other cities are doing, you know, I think that's, that's a benefit. Because then he sits here, and he's more informed, and can make a better decision, you know? So, the point that I'm, that I'm, that I'm making, and I'm warning, you know, us all, that if, if, if we agree to this, the manager's got her parameters. But if there's a commissioner that, that, that wants to go to such and such conference for such and such training, and it meets the parameters, okay? And we agree. And two months later, that same commissioner says, hey, there's another conference and, and, and training, the, um, meeting that I wanna go to, are, are we going to say, no, you already went once, you can't go again?
You may say that, and you may say no.
Yes.
I know, I know, but that's gonna cause issues and problems.
But the problem is that otherwise.
So, so then don't have the money then. The money is there to be spent on just that. See, I don't go to, I don't go to training and conferences. I, I, I just have a thing a- a- against it. But there's others that do go to training and conferences, okay? So, the money's there to be spent on conferences and training, okay?
That's the way that the budget was approved.
Let's just say, let's just say that, that, that four of us don't go to conferences and training, and there's only one commissioner that goes to conferences and training. And he goes to one or two, and then, uh, and then he wants to go to a third or a fourth. Are we gonna punish him? And we're gonna say no?
I, I think, uh, uh, can I, can, Commissioner Suarez, I mean, Commissioner Blanis, I think, I think.
Do you, you realize what I'm alluding to?
Oh, no, 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 loud and clear, loud and clear. And that is why we're discussing this item.
Mike, I have, I have a suggest, I do, I do hear you, Commissioner.
If we can't spend the money on conferences and training, and it doesn't matter if it's, if, if it's the five of us, or just one, and it, and, and we're gonna, we gotta vote yes. We can't vote no. Why are we gonna go, why are we gonna vote no if the money's there to be spent on that?
We're not suggesting.
So then, don't even have it then.
We're not suggesting that, Mr. Commissioner. We're not suggesting that you vote no. We're just answering a question that, that the commissioner has. That's it. You know, it's up to you to vote yes, and it's up to you to vote no. Period.
But what the commissioner is.
You, the money is there for conferences and training, okay?
To be used by all?
To be used by all, by one or by all, okay? So, so then, w- w- how are we gonna vote no?
It's up to you.
Might, might I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Let's divide it. Let's give a thousand dollars to the mayor, he's ahead of the table. He should be going on more conferences and training than any of us. He represents our city, he sits in that chair for a reason. Let's give him a thousand, and we divide the three thousand between us equally.
That, you know what? That's, okay, now we're getting somewhere.
And we don't share the money. If we don't use it, we don't give it to anybody else, it goes right, it goes right back in the budget.
Now, we're more structured.
You deplete your two thousand, and once you depleted your two thousand, you may tap in to your part of that four thousand.
Now, we're structured. Now, there's no contention. I'm in agreement. It's black and white.
Has to be black and white, 'cause if not, this is up to interpretation.
That's why I'm making a big deal.
Interpret it differently. I, I hear exactly what you're saying.
I'm making a big deal about this.
I hear exactly what you're saying.
May I suggest something to?
Absolutely.
In the spirit of, uh, what Commissioner Blanis is saying, he's absolutely correct, to avoid any strife between the elected leadership that has a negative impact on the city, and obviously, you know, may, w- we'll be walking on very, skating on very thin ice um, as the commissioner is advising, um, let the mayor keep the largest allocation. But let's transfer that, or use that as representation money.
Absolutely, I agree.
And increase your representation accounts to, by seven hundred and fifty dollars moving forward every year. You use it for the purpose intended, which could be representing the city at functions, for conference, for training, and if you don't use it, some of you choose to give it to your, uh, significant, um, departments that are related to your committees, and others may just decide, if you don't use it all, whatever's remaining, it rolls back into your general fund coffers. And that way, it doesn't have to really, eh, you know, no one needs to frown upon one specific person bringing a request to use money more than once.
So, so let me get this straight. You, what you're suggesting, you're, you're suggesting is having the seven hundred and fifty dollars applied to our representation account.
Yes, sir.
So now we have two thousand, seven hundred.
Seven hundred and fifty.
And if we deplete that, did you say that now?
If you deplete that, that's it.
That's it.
That's it, that's it.
It doesn't have to come to the table, doesn't create the anonymity?
And, and, and if we don't use our representation account, we can?
Designate its use, or it reverts back to your general fund.
Designate to whom? Into what?
To your committees.
To your committees?
Police, and I designated to the police department.
Yes, no, I, I'm aware of that, but what else? Is it, because you said something else?
It reverts back to your general fund reserves. If you don't use it, it continues to help us build more of our reserves.
Just like we do today.
Okay, alright.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez, can, uh, can you, uh, put a motion on the table, and then, uh?
Motion to transfer a thousand of this four thousand to the mayor's representation account. Motion to trans, to t- take seven hundred and fifty dollars of the remaining three thousand dollars and put it in each of the commissioner and vice mayor's representation account.
Vice second.
And, wait, wait. And that way, it doesn't come to the table, it's, is that?
Well, that would be for another meeting.
Oh, okay, alright. That's right, that's right.
You establish the rules on how?
That's another meeting.
That doesn't come to the table, that, that, that's your, your presentation account.
You know, let, let me take the Day League of Cities at a, as an example.
You can't.
League of Cities, the conference was ninety-five dollars. The commissioner wants to attend, the commissioner presents his, uh, reservation paperwork, we issue a check, we tender a check over to the Miami-Dade County League of Cities.
Okay.
Will that apply to polo shirts?
It can, if you designate it.
Okay.
Representation account.
It, it, it is very simple. Okay, I understand the reason you brought the, the four thousand item to the, because the manager had no parameters. But now, the manager will have parameters. Now, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate. And I know you wanna discuss the other item, but if the money's there, if we have to bring that one to the table every time, we, there might be an, an, an emergency, or there might be something that you have to attend really quick, and there might not be time to bring it to the table, so, I, then, then we'll be really managing pennies, so.
I'm fine with leaving it as it is. We don't bring that to the table, so.
Right. That's what they do.
I, I just wanted to.
As long as, and just so you know, the manager has a purview up to eight thousand dollars to spend on items. Um, that's the purchasing power that I have. It's called the purchasing power for contracts and expenses. I'm usually very careful, and I bring everything to your attention. But we don't bring Miami-Dade County League of Cities dinners, because, uh, we reserve based on your availability, your scheduling conflicts and whatnot. They're fifty-dollar meals every month. We made that check payable to the League of Cities, depending on your ability to participate or not. So, that being said, it does, they, it doesn't need to come to the table.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion on the table, I need a second.
We have a second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a second, I'm sorry. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Blanis has your vote.
Yes.
But, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez has your vote. Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Muñia.
Yes.
Four, zero.
Okay, next item.
This is an item, uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is an item that is not in the agenda.
Okay.
So, it would have to be added to the agenda, and it needs the unanimous vote of the present commissioners, because it is something that they came out as a discussion item, is that correct?
No, this is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
It's eleven, it's.
It's a resolution or?
No.
It is not.
It was a request for follow-up and clarification.
Okay, good.
Sorry, it's on the agenda.
It's okay.
Okay, it is on the agenda. Okay, next item.
Suffice, Mr. Attorney?
I'm sorry?
We, this will suffice, uh, for, for the purpose, for the intended purpose.
We do have to put it out as a resolution. We cannot leave it in the air. So, we draft the resolution saying what was agreed here.
Okay, 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 thank you.
So, maybe add, uh, um, a letter under the item as the resolution that was adopted. And then it would be a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to transfer the, uh, conference and training money by increasing the mayor's representation account by a thousand dollars, and each respective commission office and vice mayor by seven hundred and fifty dollars for the remainder of this fiscal year, and directing the city manager's office to budget accordingly as a representation account moving forward in future budgets.
Perfect.
That way, it doesn't come back in another fashion.
Perfect.
Okay.
And this is something that has been discussed in the, uh, charter review thoroughly, on several times.
Second, I, uh, the next item, I'm sorry, uh, H, I believe.
E.
E.
Yes. Item E, discussion recommendation reference to grants for cellular phone charging stations at public places within the city of West Miami. Decided, Miss, by Commissioner Rodriguez.
It's me again.
Okay, go.
I'm, I'm sure you've possibly seen these. I know they have in airports, and, and I've seen them in malls. They're actually charging stations for cell phones, for laptops. Um, and what brought this to mind, where I was discussing with the city manager, um, during the hurricane, a lot of residents were out of power, but some had power. If we put some of these charging stations in public places like City Hall, perhaps something in the park, maybe the rec center, it would allow people to be outdoors, it, it would take people from the out, from inside to outside, perhaps using their laptops, you know, at the park or something. So, it's a way to, to get people out of their houses, you know, into our green spaces, and, um, provide a service. And technology, everyone uses laptops and cell phones now. So, it'd just be a, a convenience and or service to our residents, um, to get them off the sofa, off the couch, and perhaps out of the park. And using a laptop, or even here at City Hall, it's just a service, you know, for, that, to provide to the, to the residents. And I like to pursue grants. I mean, I don't wanna spend money. Maybe we give the, the city manager the, um, the authority to go and pursue some grants, I'm sure, under some type of green grant, or technology grant, or something like that. Just, it puts us in line with where we wanna take our city.
That's the future.
It's the future. And I'm not talking about, and what's, what's specific kind, I mean, there's so many out there, which, I just wanna give her the, the marching orders to go and.
Absolutely.
And look at, look into it.
Absolutely. We'll talk to Robert and see if, uh, Robert.
And I know the city manager, Rod Hildt, I know we discussed it, so she might wanna add.
And we haven't forgot Commissioner Blanis about your books in public places.
Exactly, books in public places.
Remember that photo I showed you?
Yes, yes. So, this, this.
We're, we're, I haven't forgotten, so.
So, if you have anything to add, Madam Manager.
Maybe we can get something, a grant to, to follow up with that. Obviously, we would have to talk to the engineers about designing like a pad, something where power is available in the absence of power.
Between the Publix and Cooper Park, in that area there. Be a nice green area with, uh.
We should put them in the circles.
There you go.
And right in the middle of traffic circles. Anyway.
I know this is very broad, I just wanted to get your, you know, your thoughts, and see if we could have the manager look into it.
We'll look into it. I, it's, I mean, it's, it's something that other places have, they're indoors, you know, other entities that have a lot more money than we do. So, let us at least look into it about the possibility. And I'm not saying we're gonna have something overnight, but I think it's really taking the, the city into the future.
Yes, Madam Manager, that's very important. There's a lot of other more important things going on right now, so this is not a priority. I just wanted to.
We will address it.
Get input and give you, you know.
And, and please understand that our resources are so limited that, you know, we have projects and programs that, that have been approved, but the resources haven't been there.
This can take as long as it needs. This is not urgent, it's just a thought, and let it take as long as it needs. There are a lot of other more important things you need to do first. So, this is just putting it out there for, for the future.
Great idea. My ADD is kicking in. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next item.
Item eleven F, report by the office of the city manager in reference to use of Hurricane Irma credit line proceeds by city manager.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission. The, um, uh, the finance director prepared a spreadsheet, which is very simple, and it's titled Hurricane Irma Credit Line. And what we wanted you to know and have in your possession is a detail of the expenses associated with the issuance of the credit line, the legal fees paid, uh, to the bank attorney, to Ackerman for the closing, and I, I, again, I wanna publicly thank, um, Ackerman, actually, Jose Villalobos, our city attorney, because he's, he saved us over six thousand dollars that we were looking to pay another attorney for the closing document. So, thank you, Pepe, we need every dime here for, for hurricane-related expenses. That being said, we have spent to date, um, almost, well, actually, a little bit more than, um, almost a million dollars. And we have available for FEMA-related expenses, or hurricane-related expenses, we have out of the credit line available five hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents. So, I just wanted you to know and understand how quickly we actually have incurred almost one point five million dollars, and how close we really are, or were, with our initial assessment of what it would cost to basically bring the city back into pre-hurricane conditions.
So, what's the amount again? I'm sorry?
The, uh, we've used, out of the one point five million dollars, we have spent, uh, close to a million dollars.
Wow.
In, in a matter of, uh, three weeks. So, money goes quickly, um, and we identified all the, um, expenses here by. So, money goes quickly, and we identified all the expenses here by company name or vendor name. The big-ticket item, obviously, is the debris, and the labor involved with our city forces. But I can tell you that, as a proud resident of West Miami, I wanna thank our public works department. They've been out there Saturdays and Sundays. I mean, these guys haven't stopped yesterday getting paid overtime, but the work that is associated with bringing the city back into pre-storm conditions is just a massive amount of work. So...
Can you give us a brief explanation of how much more work does the company that's removing the debris has to do?
Yes, I think we were sometime earlier this week, and I think Juan should be speaking to this. But I think we're probably thirty...I wanna say sixty percent done with hangers. Am I incorrect, Mr. Penna?
No, that's quite correct.
Oh, it is? Okay, good guesstimate. Sixty percent done with hangers. The balance of the debris pickup is being collected by city forces, and we actually get to save money because we pay the county a cheaper rate than that that we pay the contractor, okay? So, we use our employees, and although some of the work is done in an overtime capacity, it is more cost-effective. So, they will not be back for debris removal. They are only in the completion phase of the hangers right now.
We're paying them thirty-eight dollars a...
Cubic yard.
A cubic yard. So, does the hangers that they're going to bring down, is that gonna add to cubic...
Of course.
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
But we don't pay for the labor to bring it down, or cut it?
Just the amount, the cubic yard amount?
Yes.
So, they have a big truck and, you know...
They have two crews, and they're clipping the hangers at the break point.
Okay, all right. How many cubic yards have they removed? Any idea?
Roughly over fifteen thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Fifteen.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
I mean, we paid our first check to the contractor as per the report. It's eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars worth of debris removal. And this is consistent with what we initially informed you it may cost. So, it's an expensive proposition.
Well, the last time, we paid thirty-six.
Right.
And that was many...
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years ago, so only two dollars more.
Right.
Not...
Well, back then, when the...I wanna praise Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, city... I don't know, you wear so many hats that I don't remember anymore, Mr. Penna. But in hindsight, and we didn't have that information before, but other cities pay less, and they found themselves with companies that were not complying or coming to the rescue. And some of those cities are involved in lawsuits and things like that because the promise that they got, they said, "Okay, yes, we'll be there." Well, guess what? Those trucks were in Texas. And our city was getting clean.
Well, let me tell you, I've talked to people in South Miami, Coral Gables, Shenley Park, and they have told me stories that are really bad about the type of service that they have received as far as debris removal. You have some companies, countywide, they just remove sort of like the first big layer, and then they leave behind three, four, three, four, five inches of trash. They...I mean, you can drive around, and you can see it everywhere. And the people that we had, they actually had rakes, blowers, you know, heavy-duty rakes, and they were cleaning everything up. I mean, so, you know, when they...I didn't say anything as far as what was going on with us, you know? That would've made them really feel worse. But there's a lot, a lot of complaints out there. And this company, I tell you, they've done an incredible job. Our city is clean. You drive around not far from us, and you don't see the same thing. So, once again, we...I think we've done well here, so...
Okay, so, that was just a report, correct? Thank you, thank you for that, Madam Manager. Next item.
Item eleven G, Selection of Lighting of the Tree 2017 Event Date by City Manager.
That time again.
This is crazy. This is crazy. Each year, I mean, it just gets...
Quicker.
Quicker and quicker, and, yeah, we're getting older. So, that's not the fun part. The fun part is, is that the holidays are pretty much upon us. You've all received some calendars about the different activities in the different departments, but you need to select a date so that we can start approaching our schools so that children can be ready for the event. So, we always like to be as close as we can to the first day of Hanukkah. It's always been a tradition of the city. We have selected a tentative date of Thursday, December fourteenth. Hanukkah's...The first day of Hanukkah is actually Tuesday, December twelfth. However, we pulled the calendars for both the parochial schools and the public schools, and it seems that they have either testing or holiday events on the twelfth and the thirteenth. So, we are proposing Thursday, the fourteenth, because school lets out the following week. And so, we could do either Monday, the eleventh, or Thursday, the fourteenth.
Personally, I think the fourteenth works out. Mondays are, you know...
The beginning of the week, or is it tough?
So, I would say the fourteenth. If that's okay with everybody.
Yes.
Okay? Okay, so the fourteenth it is.
And did you want the same type of program that we put together each year, inviting the schools to perform? And the Santa arrival, and you would like for us to have it at the recreation site?
It always works. Don't mess with what works.
If it ain't broken, don't fix it.
And we'll call our good friend, the photographer...
Baron.
Baron to come with his young ladies, and, yeah.
Same type of program.
If we can do the same thing, it's a hit every time.
So, as soon as Scotty comes back on Monday, we'll start sending the letters on behalf of the mayor, inviting our schools, and getting the program ready.
Okay. Excellent. Next item.
Item H, Request for Cancellation of Second Regular Commission Meeting of December, which falls on December twentieth, two thousand and seventeen. Ask customary for the holidays.
As we do every year, Mr. Mayor, this is the one meeting during December that we recess, and we're bringing it to you for formal approval so that we can start also sending calendars and notifying the public that the commission intends to break for one meeting during December.
Okay, I'm fine with it. What about the rest of the commission?
Fine.
Okay, so you got our breathing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Go to the order. Anything? Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.